All right.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. It's being held this Monday, October 17, 2022. We are live in council chambers and it's livestreamed on YouTube. It is now after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be on Monday, November 7, 2022. And that's the day before Election Day. If you wouldn't, Mr. Apollo, please call the roll.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds is absent. Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
And Ms. Warden.
Here.
And we do have a quorum. Mr. Reynolds did notify us well in advance that he would not be able to attend tonight. The agenda will remain as presented, and at this time, I would ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, or actually, it's the second item, but the first item of business is the approval of minutes of October 3, 2022. Entertaining motion. Motion by, who was that?
John.
Mr. Ansel. I'm not used to your voice all of a sudden.
Especially on this side.
Yeah, that's right. And is there a second on the motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of October 3, 2022 are approved. Welcome, Mayor. It just seems like yesterday we were doing this, and now we're doing it all over again. So, good to see you.
Hey, thank you, President Biden-Dyke. And hey, when you're having fun, why not get back together again? Just a few things to report. It's been really a busy couple of weeks for our administrative team especially, but really throughout the community. Marty Starkey retired from the Wayne County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and they held a retirement gathering in her honor on October 5. Marty was a good friend to the city and helped get our promotion out to Ohio and the states that border us. She was our city's regional outreach resource for Worcester and the county. Thank you, Marty, for 28 years of service to our communities. Wayne Economic Development Council held its annual meeting on October 6. Bill Kaler, Executive Director of Team Neo Northeast Ohio's tied to the Jobs Ohio Development Organization, spoke to the group about the strong job market in our state from the Intel chip announcement. He believes our area here in Worcester will see a bounce from the jobs related to this growth. The Ivory Room, Worcester's newest downtown store, held its grand opening on October 11. Carolyn Salazar's new bridal and formal wear shop located on East Liberty Street beside the Best Western Motel is a nice addition to our downtown selection of stores. So, we wish her very best, and hopefully, they'll be bringing a lot of folks into our town. The Wayne County Community Foundation held its annual dinner on October 12. This foundation is a philanthropic group serving Wayne County and Worcester. They make so many good things happen in our community. They honored Richard and Judy Seaman as this year's Friends of Philanthropy. Worcester is a better place from Seaman's generosity and their donation of our newest park, Clear Creek Park on Venture Boulevard. People should check it out. It's a pretty nice facility. And on Thursday, October 13, Lydia Maholick, the Director of Ohio's Department of Development, was in Worcester at the Scheffler Manufacturing Plant. She was talking about development in our area and highlighted Scheffler's newest expansion plans in Worcester with approximately 90,000 square foot addition onto their existing facility. Congratulations to Scheffler Group and their growth in our city. Lastly, I want to highlight our city's fall newsletter that will be out electronically by tomorrow on our city's website, Facebook, and LinkedIn channels, and also host hopefully on the Worcester Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Electronic Media. Lynn Apollo and our managers get the credit for this helpful newsletter, so nice job to that team. Lynn also gets the credit for posting how to use roundabouts on our city page, as you requested, Ms. Knappich.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'll turn it over to Andre to give you a bit of a financial report here, so.
Hello. So, at your desk tonight is financial information for the first three quarters of this year. About nine pages of some of the most exciting information you'll ever receive in a free format. So, I can provide that electronically for you. I finished it up at the end of last week, and instead of sending it electronically, I just figured, we're meeting Monday, so I might as well just put it out in hard, a paper format. There is also a cover letter there with, I have about four bullet points summarizing some, I guess, major activities. But quickly, in a nutshell, if, as you can see, we're doing pretty well on tax receipts. We're only up about six tenths of a percent over the same period last year, but last year, we had an unusual year for business net profits. It was the highest on record. So, I, when I did my projections, I had doubted that back a little bit, so that's why we're only at about 0.6. I mean, that's why, so if you look at my projections, we're at, I was actually projecting a decrease of three and a half percent, so we're up over that, so. But to give you an idea, net profits are 1.2 percent. Compared to last year, net profits are down about $1,150,000, while the withholding category is up about $938,000 or 7.8 percent. So, it's interesting, this is, the withholding side is almost mirroring the inflationary numbers we're seeing. The other thing, so I wanted to say is overall, our general fund, our revenues are doing quite well. We're up about 10 percent, and we're still under budget on the expenditure side by about 3.7 percent. So, again, both trending well. We are seeing some price, some inflationary pressures, I should say, as you've seen tonight. That original contract that we paid last year for the network security, I think it was 30, it was, no, it was, it was $30,000. I think the renewal price is approximately 33,000 this year.
35.
Oh, 35, okay.
35, yeah.
So, and then the other company that had it last year, I think their bid was 18 percent higher. So, but we're seeing a lot of those renewals coming in higher anyway. So, I'm a little, slightly concerned about that. That's on my radar. The other thing to point out is water fund revenues were up 4 percent through the first nine months. Expenditure, operating expenses continue to remain so far under budget. And then on the sewer fund, I had, we did, we did some debt issuance for the sewer line that's going to the new housing development, the high school. So, once you back that out, we're still up 2 percent over budget, which is pretty amazing, and our operating expenses are down as well. So, anyway, and then I have a little commentary about potential headwinds next year that I'm worried about. But feel free to read it, and if you want a PDF copy, let me know, and I'll send it to you. Just shoot me a text or an email, and I'll send you a copy. And that's about it, Your Honor.
I think that's our report, President Biden-Dyke. Thank you.
Okay, I have a good authority. Marty Starkey's gonna be here to present the Fed tax.
Oh, is that right?
And I don't know if we can out clips the, you know, Representative Wiggum and the Commissioners with some sort of presentation tour when she shows up, so. I just put that forth, and you can decide what to do, but she has done a marvelous job on a very small budget. And how they'll replace her, I know no one's not irreplaceable, but she's pretty darn close to it.
Well, thanks for that heads up.
Yep.
Take it under consideration.
And I'm sure she's living out in Shreve, she doesn't watch this on Clear Picture.
You'd be surprised.
No petitions or communications tonight, no committee reports, but Mr. Myers said he'd like to have about a 15-minute presentation. Next council meeting starting about 7 o'clock on the, our waste.
Solid Waste District and Recycling Program.
Yep. So, just kind of schedule that in. He said he has a PowerPoint. Tomorrow, he's graduating, and he's gonna be a waste expert.
You're gonna be what? A waste expert? We recycle you.
Good luck, I probably clogged this.
Everything's recyclable.
Yeah. All right. That brings us to unfinished business. The first item is the third reading of Ordinance Number 2022-25. It'll be presented by Ms. Knappich. But before I get to you, Ms. Knappich, I'm gonna ask Mr. Apollo to take a big, deep breath and read this title.
Ordinance Number 2022-25, Creating the Oak Hill Tax Increment Financing Incentive Districts, Declaring Improvements to the Parcels Within Each Incentive District to Be a Public Purpose and Exempt from Real Property Taxation. Requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district, and providing for compensation payments.
Thank you, Mr. Apollo. Ms. Knappich, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you very much. I'm sure I can't explain this as well as Mr. Reynolds did the past two meetings, but this is to establish our TIF district where we will hopefully get money to recover for the improvements we're putting in up on the North End so that we can have the new development come in, which is wonderful. There was a great picture in the paper recently about showing how much had already been done. Obviously, we need to connect those people. We need to make city services available for them, and the TIF tax, let me find the exact name again, the Tax Increment Financing Incentive District will help us recoup some, recoup that money down the road, is what I understand. All right. As I said, I understand it, I just can't explain it all that well, but I do understand it, so I'll know what I'm talking about when I vote on it. This is the third and final reading, so I would move to adopt.
All right. Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Sanders in my good ear first, so we'll credit Mr. Sanders with seconding it. Any further discussion? We've discussed this quite length, and I think Ms. Knappich did an adequate job of explaining it. And seeing nothing further, Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance Number 2022-25 passes. What an exciting piece of legislation. Adds another economic tool in our tool belt, and frankly, when we are asking people to put in large amounts of infrastructure, I think the municipality should have a little bit of skin in the game, and I think this makes it a synergistic type of project where everyone's pulling in the same direction, which is always good between private enterprise and the city.
Mr. Biden-Dyke, if I could?
Sure.
A lot of the credit for getting this TIF put together goes to Jonathan Malley and Joel Montgomery. These two were really, you know, bird dogging this whole idea of a TIF and studied other communities with them, and it truly is a good thing for our community to have this go through. So, I just wanted to recognize them for their efforts, because it took an awful lot of time, but a lot of expertise, and Jonathan is probably one of the foremost people, though, and knowledgeable being a TIF guru here, so, so thank you, Jonathan and Joel. Thank you, Mr. President Biden-Dyke.
All right. Kudos to your team there as well. I think it's a great idea and look forward that we can maybe look to it in the future when we have big projects like this. That brings us to Resolution Number 2022-44. I keep thinking I'm repeating myself when I'm reading that. It also will be presented by Ms. Knappich, but I will ask Mr. Apollo if she would be so kind to read the title.
Resolution Number 2022-44, A Resolution Petitioning the Board of County Commissioners of Wayne County, Ohio, for a Change of Township Lines to Conform with the Corporation Limits of the City of Worcester and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours again.
Yes, thank you very much. This also goes along with the expansion of the city and the wonderful things that are going up on the North End. What we would like to do is have the board, the Wayne County Commissioners, to annex an area as part of Kilbuck Township so that the limits of Kilbuck Township will match the city boundaries and will be contiguous in order to make sure that people aren't being taxed in one township and then being taxed for the city. This brings it all together and makes it cohesive, and I'm anticipating we will get fewer complaints from taxpayers as well. So, this is because I talked to Jonathan, or he came up and talked to me before the meeting, and we, the, they would like to get this done tonight. I don't think there's anything complicated about this, or certainly not anything contentious about this, so I would move to place this on third and final reading.
Motion to place this on third and final reading by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rule?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Knappich, I look to you for another motion.
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Minor, Myers, excuse me. Any further discussion? We discussed that this is important, basically, for us to have it as part of a voting precinct here in Wayne, or in Worcester, and also makes the Board of Elections very happy too, because it doesn't complicate their life. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2022-44 passes. We now transition into new business. First ordinance is 2022-27 under new business. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers. It is slated for three readings, but you can decide how to proceed, but can't go any further without Mr. Apollo reading the title.
Ordinance Number 2022-27, An Ordinance to Adopt the Updated 2023 Solid Waste Management Plan for the Stark-Tuscaloosa-Wayne Joint Solid Waste Management District and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
And Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Tonight, we were just looking to be, to pass the ordinance. We're gonna talk more about the programs that the district has at the committee meeting that we're gonna have before the next meeting, but House Bill 592 requires that every county be a part of a solid waste district. We are part of the, of course, Stark-Tuscaloosa-Wayne Solid Waste District. There are 52 such districts in the state, and it is required that those districts then present to all the municipalities within them an annual plan of how they're gonna accomplish the goal set forth in the law, and tonight, we're approving the plan for our district. There's some nice information in your packet with regard to our three-county district. We have 50 curbside recycling programs like we have here in Worcester. There are actually 77 drop-off locations. You may be most familiar with the one behind Bueller's up at Milltown. There's a new facility at the OARDC that's open to the public Monday through Friday, but there's just an awful lot of good things going on in the district. We'll talk more about some of the recycling things at the next meeting. The Ohio EPA does require that the district maintain 25 percent residential and commercial recycling rate. Our district is currently at 30 percent. We've been bouncing around 30 or 30-plus since the inception of our program. So, we're doing pretty well here in our tri-county area, and we look forward to doing even more going forward, so. I also happen to serve on the Policy Advisory Committee for the Solid Waste District as our community's, not because of my city council position, but as just an independent member of that policy committee. So, I spent many hours in the reviewing of the consultant's draft of the plan, so I do have way more information than anybody cares to hear tonight, so we're not gonna, we won't go through that. It's not a complicated issue. We do this every year as required by law, so I'm gonna move to, move this to third and final.
All right. Motion by Mr. Myers to move this to third and final, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
He just left.
He had an emergency.
He doesn't like recycling?
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
All right. The rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. If you want the fountainhead of refuse.
Recycling.
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 Actually, I'm gonna bring the policy, since you've brought it up, I'll bring the policy with me to the next meeting, and we'll read it at the meeting. It's 380 pages.
Is that all?
So, I'll be bringing, thank you for, thank you for asking for that, President Biden-Dyke. I'll bring it along. We'll review it.
And you know what? There's a thing in the charter that says, at best, you get five minutes. You'll be gavelled down with prejudice.
Five minutes every meeting, five minutes every meeting. Next spring, we'll be in Chapter 2, Page 6, yeah.
Anything further? If not, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2022-27 passes. Next item is Ordinance 2022-28. It'll be presented by Ms. Warden, slated for three readings. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2022-28, An Ordinance Leaving Special Assessments for the Approvements of Sidewalks on Portions of Liberty Street and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, this is a request by the city to levy financial assessments for the property owners, their portions of the Phase 2A and 2B street scape project that took place in downtown Worcester. This phase of the project improvements made, was made to the sidewalks along Liberty Street from Market to the first alleys east on both sides of the street, and also to the southeast and southwest quads of the square. The resolution of necessity for both phases was passed by council back on September 16, 2019, quite a while ago, during which time council also passed a resolution appointing an equalization board that subsequently heard any appeals from any property owners with concerns. Estimates for the project cost at the time of the resolution of necessity totaled $1.8 million, and the actual final expenditures upon project completion totaled 1 point, well, $1,912,137. So, that's more than a 6 percent increase from the initial estimates, which the property owners are not responsible for any of those increased costs due to the legislation being passed back in 2019 with a set 18, or, I'm sorry, $1.8 million limit. The city's finance director is going to be issuing bonds upon finalizing the property owner's unpaid assessment amounts, and therefore, to expedite this process. I'll make a motion to place this on third and final reading this evening.
All right. Motion to put this ordinance on third and final reading, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
All right. The rules have been suspended. Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I would like to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Some of us weren't here in 2019, but.
None of us were. Were we? Or was that 2020 when, 2020 was?
When we went, oh, when we went, yeah, virtual. Oh, okay. It's all a blur.
But I mean, we have a couple of new faces.
Yep. One of them.
That seems like a lifetime ago, and these ain't days anymore.
It sure does. And I didn't mention, but I'm sure you've all seen in your packets, that there is detailed expenses laid out on a spreadsheet that was also provided to us, and Mr. Koberst is here, if you have any questions.
And I know how much he likes public speaking, so he'd be rather happy to discuss this with you. Well, seeing no one wanted that opportunity, we might have all go to the roll on the motion to adopt.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
All right. The ordinance Number 2022-28 passes. Brings us to Resolution Number 2022-46. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is budgeted, so it will not require suspension of the rules. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2022-46, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Administration to Enter Into a Professional Services Contract with Jones &amp; Henry for Design Services and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is a very interesting initiative, because it goes back over 20 years ago, and the forward thinking and the strategic planning of the water treatment plant, and the staff aligned with Jones &amp; Henry. They were the firm that designed the initial filter expansion at the water treatment facility. They were the original designers, and their initial goal was to create a plant that would service the needs of Worcester in the 90s, as well as the future needs of the expanding population and industrial base within our city. So, they certainly accomplished that, and it was a formidable task, and Worcester is recognized for its cool, clear water, and we have to make that an ongoing priority, especially with the expansion of our industrial base, and we're all aware of those challenges and needs. So, with that being noted, they were re-engaged and will be involved with the design and bidding of the plant expansion. And in essence, we're going to double our capacity. We're gonna take our four filtration units, and we're going to refurb those, because after 20-plus years of operation, they need changing, ongoing preventive maintenance, upgrades, valving, and so forth. But we're gonna double that capacity. So, it is a very, very good, long-term solution for our ever-increasing needs within the city, and because of the, their understanding, Jones &amp; Henry, they were able to come in very competitively. The design and bidding element, and Mr. Montgomery provided us all with a very detailed task function summary, and each of the estimated hours, meetings, project management process to. design, miscellaneous documents and drawings, site design, architectural design, and those are all itemized for a total of 2,218 hours for $336,850. Then also, the construction administration, which is the onsite visit, the follow-up to watch the progress underway with the upgrades that will be taking place, the RFPs, the recording of the documents that are required by law, the permitting, et cetera. That's another $151,750 for a total design bidding and construction administration cost of $488,600. The good news is, we have this amount fully budgeted in our 2022, 2023 operating budget. They have the understanding of the requirements that puts them in a very formidable position to fast-track and get this accomplished on time and within budget. And there is an additional summary provided that Mr. Kobelarskic provided us from a Jake mindering, I don't know, a minder ding, that gives a total overview of the cost-benefit components of this initiative. The total project upgrade and cost will be approximately $6.3 million. That has been budgeted also and forecasted for the capitalized funding of that wastewater treatment or water treatment upgrade. So, very clear, very understandable, and the best part, very strategic that this was initiated over 20 years ago. It's pretty remarkable that we had the foresight then to be where we are now. So, that being noted, I mean, we can ponder this, but it is very straightforward. It is all budgeted. Timing, in my opinion, the sooner the better. We're all very aware of this required upgrade and understand the dynamics. So, with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council. Oh, yeah, motion to adopt resolution 2022, day 46.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? I might add, I'm sure there's some people in Jackson, Mississippi, wish they had 20 years' worth of foresight, or now.
Amen.
Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2022, day 46 passes. That brings us to resolution number 2022, day 47. It likewise will be presented by Mr. Ansel, and likewise, it is budgeted. And before I get back to you, Mr. Ansel, Ms. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2022-47, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for improvements to clarifiers and the V L R system and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours again.
Yes, here we focus on, you know, the resource of water and management of the filtration and purification process. This is a budgeted item, and this request is to authorize for the advertisement for bids to enter into a contract with the lowest bidders for the improvements to the V L R number five. And thanks to Mr. Kobelarskic, that is the vertical loop reactor number five. And just so we all understand, it's part of the process of adding air in the waste stream to remove minimized ammonia, so very important. And thank you for the tutorial, Mr. Kobelarskic. I thought the V L R five was a pretty intriguing acronym, so it was reassuring to know what that is. And then, replacement of clarifiers, number five and number six at the processing facility. The nice thing about this is, in our budget, we had reserves set established that were 17% higher than the total estimates that we have secured. But this will be the final bidding process, so we can initiate this and have this in place, I believe, next year. Is that correct, Mr. Kobelarskic?
That's the plan, yeah.
So, that being the plan, and recognizing the importance of water purification and maintenance, I would motion to adopt resolution 2022, day 47 this evening.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Resolution number 2022, day 47 passes. Turn our attention to resolution number 2022, day 48. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders. I think it's slated for three readings, but I know it's slated to be read by Ms. Apollo. So, if you would do so, thank you.
Resolution number 2022, day 48, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract with Cyerebro for network security services and allowing for immediate enactment.
There we go.
Mr. Sanders, with that send off, it's, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we've, as we've seen in the past, and will continue to see in the future, network security is definitely an important function that our IT division does for the city and all its computers and network services and systems. As Mr. Doherty was talking about earlier, the current provider of that system was $30,000. They want an 18% increase, which makes it 35,400. And at this point, this new company is willing to give us a two-year contract at $33,120 per year. So, it's a, it's a nice savings, and at this point, again, going back to the point of, A, we need to do this, B, we want to do this in the most efficient manner, and C, concerns the fact that costs are continuing to rise, this makes sense to move forward with this particular piece. So, with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. I turn to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any discussion, questions?
I have a question. And forgive my ignorance on this. I don't know if there's anyone here from, with IT knowledge. I'm sure that the administration has looked through this pretty well, but I was surprised when I looked up the company. I was surprised to learn that it's not an American company. I know that they do have an office or a location in the U.S., but is that common for government entities to outsource to different countries for our security? Okay.
It's not uncommon to have companies that have operations in other countries to do that. Bob Edmonds, our IT manager, he did a pretty thorough investigation before, you know, we talked about this quite a bit before we came forward to council.
It seems like a reputable company, and, you know, it looks like they're very professional and successful, but I just, I thought that was strange, and I tried to look up statistics on other governments, and it, you know, it's not easy to find that information, so it's curious. Thank you.
Good to know.
Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
Resolution number 2022, day 48 passes. Look at ordinance number 2022, day 29. It will be presented by Ms. Knappick. It's slated for three readings. Ms. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2022, day 29, an ordinance amending Chapter 1351 Minimum Housing Standards and Property Maintenance Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, to allow the city to abate violations of the Property Maintenance Code when property owners refuse to make necessary repairs to property.
Ms. Knappick, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. This is, this is a good piece of legislation in that we, the city, has had an abatement program for some other things. We'll go out and mow people's lawns and then charge back and get rid of critters and dangerous situations like that and charge them back. But we do have a number of people, property owners in the city that don't necessarily live in the city, that really don't care what our city looks like, and it ends up being a bad, a poor reflection on the city of Worcester. So, this will allow the city to undertake more repairs and improvements to, to properties that aren't up to code or aren't, are in ISO, if only that. I'd like to have Mr. Manay just give us a little bit of background on this.
Sure. I don't have any exciting acronyms like V L R five. The P M C 18, the Property Maintenance Code. It is adopted along with all of the mechanisms in that code that allow us to do what we do. And one of those things is, it does allow us to abate situations, as Ms. Knappick said, high grass, garbage and debris in yards. We tow cars. We do other things like that, and we've been doing that for a number of years. What this change to the ordinance does, it's just, it's kind of a belt and suspenders approach. It sort of mimics what's already in the code, but puts it in our codified ordinance because we are ending up in court a lot more than we had in the past. So, it just closes any potential loophole somebody might try to find and just shores up something that we've been doing for a long time. When we certify these costs of abatement to the auditor for special assessment, we try to collect those fees back after we do that.
Thank you very much. Basically, this gives us a little bit better enforcement power because it is codified, and as any lawyer knows, if there's a loophole to be found, we will find it. And this closes up one of those loopholes. So, I'm going, I don't see this as anything controversial. I don't see it as anything that would bring in any commentary or negative commentary from the community. So, I'm going to move to suspend the rules and put this on third and final reading.
All right, motion by Ms. Knappick to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Knappick?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. I turn to you again, Ms. Knappick.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? Seeing that it's already in the, our big property maintenance code, I don't see any problem with just reducing it into our own ordinances. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Knappick?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022, day 29 passes. That brings Ms. Knappick, we'll be presenting our penultimate ordinance, ordinance number 2022, day 30. It's slated for three readings. Before I get back to you, Ms. Knappick, I'll ask Ms. Apollo to read the title.
Ordinance number 2022, day 30, an ordinance amending Chapter 113 Clerk of Council of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, to allow the clerk to correct scribeurs, errors, and ordinances, resolutions, and minutes adopted by city council or other public bodies.
I would think with such great power you're getting, you'd be more excited about that.
I feel like I should have a crown.
Heavy is the head that wears the crown. Ms. Knappick, the floor is yours.
Yes, this ordinance gives our clerk of council the ability, without having to come back to us, to make just corrections such as clerical errors. If letters are transposed, or numbers are transposed, just minor errors, a misspelling, a grammatical error, a numerical error, instead of us having to make a motion to amend or to bring it back to city council for adoption, this allows our clerk of courts to go ahead, or clerk of council, I'm sorry, to go ahead.
Elevating now, too.
There you are. Now, you really are the queen. But it just allows her to make those changes without having to go through the rigmarole of having to come back to city council, having made those changes for, for either adoption of something that we could have adopted, but we didn't because the small errors that were in that. So, again, I don't think this is very controversial. I like that. I like getting not controversial things. And so, I would move to suspend the rules and move this to third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Knappick?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Floor is yours again, Ms. Knappick.
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discretion? I think technically, within our discretion, this probably would exist, but I feel better when we codify it, and that way, anyone has any questions or wants to challenge the ability to do so, it's in black and white.
I think if anybody wants to challenge the numerical changes, they don't have enough to keep them busy.
You'd be surprised.
Oh, I know.
We've had, we've had some dates wrong recently that, you know, obviously, we didn't mean that to be 2020. It was 20, you know? So, it just got typed, typed incorrectly or transposed or something. It makes sense to just be allowed to let that go through without having to...
Does this, does this just apply to, I guess, misspellings, errors, mistakes that, that Ms. Apollo finds prior to a meeting on the legislation? Or is that something? So, if I see, because, you know, I always like to find a typo. So, if I, if I find a typo, we just don't have to discuss it again.
You can still find the typos. And now, what we wouldn't have to do is you could pass it. You wouldn't have to. We can make the amendment on the floor.
Okay.
If not, if it got through, even you're equalized, we could still pass it, and then, when someone notices it, a good example that I have, and you might remember this from last year, is for a long time within our code, certain planning and zoning reviews kept referring to, what was it, Section Zero? And there was no Section Zero. And that had been a placeholder, and it was very obvious from the text, it was referring to the review section of the code. That's something that we could go back and fix without having to come back to you. I think right now, under the law, the, it's still effective. So, if you can tell from the face of it what it's supposed to mean, it's still effective legislation. But I don't think we have the authority, the administration has the authority, to just change it without taking it to council. So, for that reason, this gives us that ability, and it just streams, streamlines the process. It also is limited to misspellings, grammatical errors, numbering errors, or cross-referencing errors. It also requires us to provide a report to council on any changes we make within three months. So, that sort of preserves any oversight that the legislative branch has.
We just don't have to relit, we don't have to revote it or have it read.
Correct.
Just add length to the meetings. It's not necessary.
Correct.
Let's quit talking about it and vote.
Speaking of that, let's...
Seeing nothing further, do I have to call you now, Queen of Council there?
Whatever you want.
Call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 2022, day 30 passes. Final piece of legislation is resolution number 2022-49. It will be presented by Ms. Knappich. It's slated for no readings other than this one, because it's budgeted. Before I get to you, Ms. Knappich, I'll have Mr. Apollo read the title.
Resolution number 2022-49, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase a compact track loader and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. We need a track loader, and it's budgeted. And I would like to just mention that Kurt Denning did call me today to ask if I had any questions on this. I was not able to get back to him, but is there anything that you want to add? Essentially, this is something that is necessary, that the piece of equipment that we have now is getting old and needs to be replaced.
Yeah, 1975, or is a tractor we'll be replacing, so it's spent its useful life. It actually has some issues with it, there's a freeze plug, it's a freeze plug that's in the back of the engine, the tractor actually needs splitting, so, yeah, it's in need of replacement. It's spent its useful life for the city of Worcester, and that as well.
I would say it was like 1975.
You can't get more than 47 years out of it.
Almost 50 years. That's remarkable.
That thing's almost as old as you are.
So with that, I would like to move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? You get all the great, big-boy Tonka toys, don't you? Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2022, day 49 passes. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion. No public comment tonight, so we'll start with Mr. Sanders on council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to thank Mr. Dordia for providing us with the third quarter financial information that he did. It's good news, it's very helpful, and, yes, we'll need to continue to watch the situation and see where it takes us, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, President. I wish the Cleveland Guardians best of luck this evening in the baseball game. I have nothing further.
Mr. Ansel?
It's great to be back, Mr. President and council.
Great to have you. Ms. Knappich?
I just want to wish Marty Starkey the very best. She's going to be missed a lot. She did an amazing, an amazing job, and to welcome the ivory room to downtown Worcester. That's wonderful. And I can thank Mr. Dordia for that financial information, it's very helpful. Thank you.
And we'll give you the last word there, Ms. Warden.
Thank you, I'm honored. I have nothing to say, though, so, thank you.
Sometimes that's the best thing.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. Ansel, moving to adjourn, is there a second? Second, Mr. Myers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.